Being at 6:30, we'll call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can't put the two six footers plus in front.
We should have done this by height.
Roll call. Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Mahoney?
Here. All right. Move on to approval of the agenda.
I'd like to move the consent agenda to after executive session.
You moved it to where?
After executive session.
After executive session, I'm sorry.
Stick it as right after item 12, between 12 and 13.
The only thing, Ed, when you do that, if there's something you want broken out of there, you still cannot break it out then, right?
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Does that need a second?
One.
No, it doesn't need a second, does it?
We have to approve the agenda as amended. We have motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're just moving the consent agenda. We will go to audience to visitors. Yeah, our visitors, thank you. And we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
As presented unless someone has any questions.
Thank you. And superintendent's report.
I've got several things here. Start first with September 11th. Just reminder, we have our board workshop with Laura Martinez. Joe and I have been back and forth with emails today. Laura Martinez's idea was with two new board members reviewing the roles, responsibilities, and agreements. I think Joe and I were looking for feedback. Was there anything from the board that they were looking for from a workshop? Does that sound accurate, Joe?
Yeah. If you guys remember, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you guys remember, Laura will come and talk about our roles and responsibilities as a board member, and I think Brian's really the only one who needs that update. He's going to get that in his mandatory two meetings though, isn't he?
I've already been to it.
Oh, you've already been to it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I kind of thought if that's what Laura was going to do, perhaps we could take her sort of canned general roles and responsibility and look back at the documents we created on September 3rd of 2015. The board superintendent communication expectations, the legacy of the board, which was kind of fun to review by the way, and the board agreements. If you guys are okay with that, or if you want something added to that, Laura will certainly add to that. I wondered even if we fully committed to Laura, if we even needed to pay for Laura.
We have to.
Okay, we have to, okay. If there's something you want, if we don't want to revisit those three, but I assumed we wanted to revisit at least the legacy and create a legacy for 2019 document. I think you guys, did you guys get a copy of this or did I just die?
We could send it out.
Okay.
We have.
We had created those before, and I thought maybe we would just revisit those and do whatever else people wanted to do with Laura. But I didn't think we needed the roles and responsibilities. Again, we've all been through that training, and it sounds like Brian's already done it, so he's already had that training too.
Anything additional that you guys feel you want to broach?
Top topics talked about.
And in the meantime, we can get a copy of those.
I'll send those out tomorrow.
Because they're way down in your email pile. Sorry, Kelly, I didn't want to search down my email, but I finally did. Although I found it.
And I'll resend those tomorrow.
Thanks. Does anybody have any more further expectations for our meeting on September 11?
I think we could take what we did in 2015 and just expand on it with our new board members and kind of see where it takes us.
Okay. Schools opened with a smooth start. Thanks to all of our employees and administrators for their hard work and professionalism to get our year off on the right track. All of our classrooms now are fully staffed, but we still do have some non-certified staff positions that we're trying to fill, so we'll continue to work on that. We're also finalizing all of our extracurricular positions for the upcoming school year, and we'll have a complete list for the board with placements for stipends at the September board meeting. Some of you may have noticed that the Senate overrode the veto of the governor, and I've been putting a lot of that in my weekly updates. About a week and a half ago, the House is scheduled to vote tomorrow. It'll be interesting to see if they have enough votes to override the veto because they need a supermajority. If they do override it, equitable funding formula will be in place. If they don't, they go back to the table and work on negotiations. I know they've been working on some of those now, so tomorrow will be a big day to see where we're going with funding. As of right now, we're two payments short from the state, so hopefully they get something hammered out quickly. Want to thank Swedish American Hospital. They gave $1,000 donation, or will be giving a $1,000 donation towards our extracurriculars at the high school. Jake and I will be accepting the check with Donna Menke on September 6th. And also, the last thing I have is I updated our board slash superintendent goals, and I put those in your folders for you to view when it's convenient. That's all I have.
Do you have any idea where we are with athletic numbers for both the high school and the middle school?
I talked with Sully the other day, and Jake, maybe you can update a little bit, and that's where I asked.
What was the question? I apologize.
Athletic. Where the numbers are for athletics at the high school and middle.
They're up in all falls board areas. We actually have a JV team for golf, which we haven't ever had in the past. Our football team had over 60 kids. We actually had more kids out for football than Belvedere, regular Belvedere has this year.
I'm not sure where numbers are at middle school. I do know our football numbers are down at middle school.
Well, I mean, it's pretty well published on social media. So I said both elementary grade teams are playing with either 11 or 12 kids. Just asking if that's a correct number.
I haven't double-checked, but I know our football numbers were down.
Does it, would it be, use the opportunity then to maybe go back and look at the decision that we made going forward and see if that's really what we want to do as far as maybe some other kids participate in some of these sports that prevent that middle school number?
I think that our football number is probably the whole program needs to be looked at about where we fit and how we're going to be able to deal with decreasing numbers as we move forward.
Just to give a heads up, I know, talking to a number of teams in the area, while our numbers have gone up, we've had schools such as Meringo, a number of schools that are larger than us who we play for various events, and they've actually told us that their, even their lower levels are down. Some of the schools that are larger than us have actually had to cancel some of the meets that they've had on things. So, I mean, it's great.
Something I'm confused. Has that done a rationale for going back and looking at that, whether we should let industry kids participate or keep those numbers up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know about that. I guess, I apologize. I was just speaking to like the number of people who we have out. Our numbers have gone up and other numbers have gone down on things.
I had a question back on the school funding part.
Go ahead.
In your report. When you say we're behind two payments, is that two payments from last year what has owed us, or has this year's payments?
Would be for this year's payments.
We're two payments behind.
State aid.
State aid.
For state aid.
We were supposed to get one August 10th and August 22nd.
Is there a, so right now technically for this year, we're running off of reserves?
Correct.
As is every district?
Yeah.
And that's the part where you talk about then where if it were to continue.
To continue. How long can you go?
Okay. Is that being discussed at the superintendent's level as far as?
We have, and almost everybody's running off reserves right now. I mean, there's not much anybody's doing. They haven't made adjustments to budgeting or anything like that right now, but I don't know where that leads to in the future. As of right now, I think every one of us are, we've opened schools up as planned with regular plans in place, hoping that something will be done here in August.
Okay.
All you got?
That's it.
All right, and we'll move on to committee reports. Policy committee?
Policy committee is not met, and we don't have any.
All right. Business services committee?
Building that month.
Facilities?
This town?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we haven't met there either yet, nor has CIA.
Curriculum.
But we will have to have facilities, curriculum, and if the state can get revenues sorted, but business set up soon too.
Okay. Can we set a tentative, or do you want to do that later, curriculum meeting?
We could do it. Usually I run them a week before a board meeting, so it's kind of fresh in our minds.
Okay.
Do you want to look to set that, those now? Typically do a curriculum slash business meeting. What's our next board meeting on the Tuesday? 25th?
26th. 6th.
26th.
Like 19?
Is it a Tuesday or is it a Wednesday? Typically set curriculum and businesses on Wednesday if that works for everybody. That would be the 20th, is that right?
Yeah, 20th.
And then I'll work with Tom about where he wants to put facility. Sometimes we hold those on the same night.
You know this, 6:30 we were talking about.
Facilities.
Usually curriculum's about 3:45. Business is typically 6:30. We'll see if maybe we squeeze facilities in in front of that.
Is it possible, as I look at my OCD spreadsheet, business services has no parents on the committee. Can they have theirs earlier, and facilities and CIA have theirs afterward? Is there any, is there?
I'm usually working with the chairperson and their work schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
But.
So when, what times were you thinking then?
Tentatively, right now, I'm roughing it at 3:45.
Or?
Five. 6:30?
What would be a 3:45?
Curriculum and business, does that work for you though?
Not on Wednesday.
Not on Wednesday.
Sweet. 30 to 2:45. Yeah, I could do it at 3:45.
Because then that way my teachers can usually stay after school.
Okay. Parents can do that too. Ken, I, will you jot down for facilities, I'm kind of interested in having somebody present or bring us up to date on where we are on our green initiatives at the school. Are we recycling? What are we doing? What is, where are we going with that? Where are we at? It's crossed my mind a couple times, and I thought maybe we could just be brought up to speed as a board where we're at with that.
Okay.
Okay, so move on to unfinished business. Second reading and approval of policies.
Same policies we went over last time. Ask for the board to approve the second reading.
Make a motion to approve second reading of the policies.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And then our favorite, a second reading of approval of policy, 6:00 and 3:10.
This is board directed at a last meeting and move this to this month to be voted on by the full board. We missed some time tonight, but this is the version of press that has no limitation on the number of credits that can be taken outside of the district, and this would be considered the second reading.
Move Dr. Vasquez on it.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussions? Roll call.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsley?
Abstain.
Mrs. Nancy?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
No. Motion carries. All right. We will move on to new business, the August 2017 bills.
Booster, is it?
Razorhorse.
Move to your miss, present.
Can I ask? Go ahead, get your stuff and ask my question. I'm sorry.
One second, then you can go ahead.
All right, discussion.
I guess I came back, I've been going by, driving back and forth past the high school. I assume that we had somebody else come in and tree yards. I'm wondering if we got some kind of recourse back for the damage that was done to all the baseball fields and soccer fields?
On baseball fields and the soccer fields for?
Outfields are dead.
My understanding, and when I spoke with grounds on this, was we actually sourced it out to someone who has a license, and they came in and they did it. And the problem is?
Jake, I understand that part.
Okay.
But that's what we're doing here, is approving this bill.
Yeah.
Before we approve paying that bill, is there going to be recourse back? You can't just apply pesticides and have them run off target at that level in the state of Illinois that you kill outfield on everything that you touched in the district.
When, the other thing that I'll say, if it'll have any sway on things, when I spoke with Mr. Guthrie, he did say that the grass is starting to come back now on all those areas, but I don't know. I mean, you're right, there were very big dead areas on all of our fields.
Soccer field's dead all the way down through the middle.
We should please call up and see if we can get some money back. If you want to pull that bill and not pay it, let's follow up on it.
I don't know that, I can't believe that we're the ones sitting here saying that. I mean, whoever's in charge of that, when it got done, I mean, who's responsible for that? Why should we pay for that? I mean, it's not just there. Every other one of the schools they touched, they screwed it up too.
And I don't know about the other schools. It was something that I spoke with Mr. Guthrie about because I had some questions about it myself. And you'll notice it's where the drainage runs down through on the soccer field on things.
I understand that, but the licensing requirement is, the person that applies it is responsible for going off target, which is what that's called.
Yeah.
In very real terms. It just, you can't have that. I mean, they killed competition fields. Sorry.
No, absolutely, thank you. So we have a motion and second if we want to.
So we're going to pull the lawn care by Walter stuff from the bills?
I don't believe we can yet, can we?
We have to vote it down.
We would need to vote this down and amend it.
Okay, so, okay. Roll call.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Kinsley?
No.
Mrs. Nancy?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Mr. Razorhorse?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so make a motion to, I'm on the bills, move on here by Walter, bills payable?
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, so I have to roll call. I have to roll call that. I get swept away with that one. Sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Kinsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Abstain.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Okay.
We still have to approve the rest of the bills or?
What was that motion?
I didn't say anything about the rest of the bills. Make a motion to approve the rest of the bills.
Okay.
Be on there.
Yeah. Need a second for it still. Roll call.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
And that will more than likely be coming before us again with some sort of addendum to it.
I'll probably put it in my weekly update where we're at with that.
Okay, perfect. So moving on to the FY18 tentative budget.
Yes. We presented it to you last month. This is the tentative budget, which needs to be on display for 30 days before the board can adopt. It is very similar to what we presented, like I said, to last month. It still does not have definite revenue because of the unknowns from the state and the certified personnel because we're still in negotiation with NBEA, but it does reflect all of our expenses and personnel costs in there. My recommendation is to approve the tentative budget for this board. Julian, was there anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that the changes that you see were for me updating new staff members in the budget, and also I changed the transportation because I had the transportation report completed, and so I estimated what we were going to receive for that. But just going forward, the September changes, I'll have to update the benefits because they're not, they're not done with the new staff. The new staff have not all turned in all the paperwork that they need, so we haven't updated all the benefits yet, and I will have that next month. And we have not updated the teachers contractor, the other staff, some of the other staff's contracts. We don't know the revenues, so I'll have to update those when we find them. I do, I will be increasing or decreasing corporate personal property tax. We got notification that that was going to go down about $20,000 for next, this year, and I got some notification about E-rate, which is reflecting about a $30,000 increase, so I will make that change. And the last change is that I just got notification about unemployment. Apparently, there's some people that didn't get jobs that were released last year, so we'll be paying more than I expected, and I'll have to increase for that as well. So those are the changes I anticipate for September.
Motion.
One second.
Galloway? Roll call.
Can we do discussion first?
Yeah.
Matt, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Being 36 pages, is it usual customary, could it be requested that there be some sort of overarching summary that generalizes like where, but like a presentation that helps us see like compared to last year, or what your plan is, or you've decided to move more here, or you and Julia have decided?
That's what we've talked about, but without the revenue, I haven't held the meeting because I don't know. And that would be what would be at the business meeting when I have details like that.
Okay.
Is this something that has to be taken care of?
Yes, it has to be on display for 30 days. Before you can approve it, we have to approve it in September.
So it's still just tentative?
It's tentative, and we would walk back with any adjustments and changes.
So you're intent to put it in front of the business services committee before then?
We would talk about it, yes, before we go to approve it, yes.
Anything further?
Am I correct in thinking, sorry, Mike, for not understanding this fully, am I correct in thinking this would be the time, or when we finally approve it, when you would present, here's where we're thinking of putting more lesson curriculum, more lesson facilities than we did last year, and this is the rationale why, because remember we've kind of talked about getting a better grasp of where, so that somebody, if somebody comes to us and asks for computers, we already have sort of generally in our mind that we've already kind of set aside more for IT, more for curriculum, more for facilities, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's, I mean, all that's kind of in, we've talked about plans for this year all through the spring. Those are reflected within this, what we've discussed.
Roll call.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
All right, moving on to item C, policy committee structure.
Yes, this was something Joe had brought forward. Joe, you wanted to bring the policy committee structure up and you discuss it.
Actually, yeah, I have really no end results in mind except to get us to take a look at, as I had shared a few months back about when I attended the policy meeting, and there were so few people at it, and policy seems like it's a pretty important committee for us. And so Kelly, if you could put that image I gave you up to try and make it, we get presented the 2:1.2:150, but I thought I'd create a little bit more visual, and maybe can you pop that into presentation mode, blow up that one slide, just to let you guys see. There you go, that one right there. Oh, there we go. To see what the total number of people on each committee is, what it takes to get quorum, and if we want to revisit that. And so my only recommendation, if you guys are amenable to it, would be to send this back, since it is a policy, to the policy committee. That would give us by the time Mary has a policy meeting, for anybody to give Mary their input or attend that meeting and set up, yes, we'd like to see more. Once I put this together, I realized that we don't have parents on all committees, and maybe we don't want parents on all committees, or maybe we do, according to a strategic plan, want to make sure that we have parents on all committees. And I thought this sort of laid it out nicely. N-BES is strangely missing from CIA, and maybe that's something that's intentional, or maybe it's an oversight. So I just thought that would give you guys a visual. Are we satisfied with that? Is there's anything in particular we'd like to see change? And I guess my thought would be that a quorum of four setting, or at least presenting our, talking about our policy seemed like an awfully small number to be discussing and directing our policy.
One of the other things too, and I think you went off of what is stated in our policy about the members that have to be on there.
Yeah.
There's a clause in there too that says, "or as appointed."
Or as appointed, right. And so there, are there more?
So like, for instance, N-BES on the CIA, you've got a Melissa Nachman-Pasak that I'm thinking just right off the top of my head that would qualify for N-BES.
Okay, and?
And I'd have to go through and look, but, so we do have some extra people that are, that are appointed or on those committees, hopefully trying to get a full cross section.
Right, and maybe if, rather than have a clause in there that says, "or as appointed", which would allow for pretty much anything, we just outline what we'd like to see and maybe take that "or as appointed" out, or maybe we don't want to take that out. But if, we want, once somebody on N-BES, I would say, let's put N-BES on the list and not sort of throw them into the "or as appointed." If we want more parents, I think that was part of our strategic plan. It seems to me we would want some more parent involvement.
So that would be 2:150.
2:150, yeah. But maybe at?
Review that the policy could be.
Yes, so there would be nothing to vote on now, just perhaps request that Mary bring that up at the next meeting, and then that would give us plenty of time to share anything
I would like to have parents and others on the committee. I don't know if they want
with you.
to be on it.
Right.
But I would welcome any parents that wanted to be a part of that committee. And this is important in those decisions that affect everyone.
And Mike, you're going to want the communication committee added to that policy as well?
We have a holder in there, but we need to, we talked about getting it up and start this fall, so we need to put something in there with that too.
So that was all I had.
Okay, so you agree on that?
Yep.
All right, we will move on to class sizes.
Yes, hold on, give me one second, I'll put this together. I had reached out to the board members to let them know that we had two classes that had gone above policy. One was the kindergarten class at Papa Grove, which at that time was the size of 52, so we needed to roll one section. We also had larger kindergarten numbers at Manchester. Our numbers right now are at 50 at Papa Grove, but any new students again would put us back over the top of that. Manchester, like I said, there was 30, 34 kindergartners enrolled at Manchester, so we reassigned one of our current teachers and then looked to fill a 1-2 split to balance us off there and keep us all within policy. All of our K4 classes are within policy now between 17
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Razorhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Gerberly?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Raiserhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Gerberly?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.